Wayne'sville City Council is now in open session. Would you please stand for invocation and pledge of allegiance? Mr. Curtis, could you lead us in invocation?
If you would, join me in prayer. Lord God, we thank you for this time of year, for the spring of the year where things come to life. And Lord, as we maybe see the end of this pandemic, Lord, as the United States comes back to life economically and just as families, Lord, we ask for strength, we ask for guidance for our city council as we make decisions for our city. And Lord, we just give you praise in all this growth that we see. God just now watch over each person represented here tonight and their families, and we give you all the praise and all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to make an announcement. There is going to be a change to the agenda. Bill 2021-17 amending Chapter 110 in regards to City Council Committee should be added to the agenda as Item 7C. I'm going to call for a motion to approve the amendment.
Motion.
Mr. France?
Check.
Mr. Connolly? There'll be one roll call, you want to show hands on that.
Councilman Farnum?
No.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Uh, no.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have any citizen comments this evening? No citizens' comments? Special guest, you have a presentation to a business spotlight of this month. It's Price Cutter's. And Mr. Curtis, you can join us down here. Whereas Ramsey Price Cutter Supermarket has been an integral part of the city of Wayne'sville for generations since its beginning in the 1990s. And whereas Price Cutter offers a wide variety of groceries and other household products along with hard-to-find specialty foods, beverages as well. And whereas Price Cutter's individual departments such as their deli, bakery, floral, meat department, and pharmacy guarantees satisfaction and delights shopper experience as their staffs are ready and willing to provide the best customer service. And whereas for over 30 years, Price Cutter of Wayne'sville has served Wayne'sville community well through his struggles and accomplishments. The city wishes to honor not only the service this business provides, but also the employees of Price Cutter for their dedication and compassion to our citizens and the surrounding community. Now therefore be resolved that I, Dr. Jerry Brown, Mayor of Wayne'sville, do hereby proclaim Ramsey Price Cutter Supermarket of Wayne'sville Business Spotlight Winner of the Month. Got it? Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
And if nobody knows, John O'Malley's with food. Price Cutter has outstanding chicken grillers. They make on all kinds of different flavors.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have a board report first thing. Board report. Mr. Malady?
City Mayor, Council. Port word bed on April the 8th. Come to order at 6:04 PM. And some of the highlights that we talked about was it was suggested that we could use another pavilion at the farmer's market and a smoother parking area. It's getting well-used now, and many vendors are having to go outside and set up tables or tents or something. So I think another pavilion would be something we should look into. Concerning the stage, Trey is going to put some signs around it to help keep people off the stage. One of our members, Bonnie, has volunteered to plant and maintain flowers at the new restroom in Roosevelt Park. She'll do it all herself. She'll do it till as long as she's here. He really wants to do that.
And I'm sure help is always welcome.
Yeah, they're looking very nice there, too. And the Master Gardener are having a fundraiser on 15 May at the farmer's market, and they're going to start working again on the demo garden on April 10. One of our members, Mr. Carpenter, was very happy at the RV park that the electric pole that's been broken for over a year has been fixed. So he really had a wonderful night that night. We adjourned at 6:41 PM, and our next meeting will be Thursday, May 13.
Any questions from Mr. Malady? You get up early tonight?
Yeah.
Planning and zoning. Mr. Davis?
We had a meeting on April 13. The meeting opened up at 5 o'clock. We talked about proposed ordinance 182021-16, establishing infrastructure development program. It's a way for the contractors in the city to be together, reduce some of the cost to the contractors, as well as get the stuff put in the city a little better. Do you want to talk on that? John?
I can. So again, as we discussed in planning and zoning and also in utility, the proposed ordinance was sent from utility to planning and zoning for approval and then went to the council, obviously. This ordinance does not require, but allows, the opportunity for developers who are interested in developing within the city, the opportunity to take advantage of utilizing city, crew, and COP, okay? The 2021 COP, a portion of this money will be invested in the city's infrastructure. And we are looking at investing in the infrastructure that is best suited for the city. There are a limited number of properties that actually can take advantage of this. They must have all utilities within the city. That was a requirement. So they must have electric, sewer, water, and gas, all city utilities. If the property checks all those boxes, then they can take advantage of this proposed ordinance. So if they have that, say they have that, what if they don't want to take advantage of it, or maybe they think they can install the utilities for a lesser rate themselves? They still have that option. We're not changing the original way that has typically been taking advantage of currently. We're leaving it in play. It's there. This is just a way that the city has to invest in their infrastructure personally as well.
You want to talk about Section B also?
So Section B is the way that we actually do the agreement now. The difference that we have added in Section B is there is a requirement. So Section A, if the city installs it, they're going to install it, you know, with the care and expertise, knowing that they will own, operate, and maintain that infrastructure into the future, you know, forever. Section B is, like I said, it requires the city to be onsite as this infrastructure is being installed. So we have the only difference between what we have done before and what we will do now is we will actually charge a fee per foot for inspection. And that fee is listed in Section B. Before, we would send guys out there and inspect, and I don't think we took this task very serious, but realized the end product of what the contractor puts in is a system that the city will own forever. So we want a very high-quality product, and one way to do that is to provide inspection services throughout the installation of that product, okay? So whether it's gas, sewer, electric, whatever they're putting in, we will staff a guy there to watch and ensure that the main is properly backfilled, which, you know, may or may not happen when you're not there. And the inspectors of the past, we actually had, you know, they had jobs to do. They had things going on. So now the job of this individual will be to make sure that our infrastructure is being installed per our specs and standards.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Are you going to allow the contractor to run gas lines? Is that going to be the city online?
We will leave that the same. We install gas and electric, okay, right now, currently.
Okay. So I'm just looking at the fee chart per meter foot, and that's why I was asking the question.
Yeah, we will still install those, and that's... We'll be honest with you, I think there are probably three properties, maybe four, that this will actually apply towards, but these are properties, again, that's within the city, and that's the important part here. They are full-city utilities. And whether they take advantage of Option A or B, I want them to take advantage of one of them. I'm excited about trying to develop these properties.
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
I read the ordinance in its entirety, and there were certain things in it that I had questions about. So I went to one of our past better developers who spent in excess of 20 million within the community since he's been back. And I asked him to read through it and then brief me on his thoughts. He said this ordinance would not work for him.
Okay.
And that really, this would be more expensive way to develop, in that it talks about prevailing wage and stuff like that. Well, we know that out here in the community, you can get sheet rock installed for 75 cents per linear foot, whereas on posts, they're paying a bunch more. I mean, as evidenced by our airport, 1,600 square foot, $759,000 per 1,600 square foot. That's prevailing wage. Whereas on the outside, you build a 1,600 square foot building like that for 180, 200,000. What I would highly recommend is that maybe we get some developers in here that we have known, we trust, and try and do a win-win, not only for the city, but for them, just like we did when we had building codes that we were looking at modifying. We pull them in and get their input on it. We still make the council, still makes the ultimate decisions, but get their input on these things to where we can tweak it and make it maybe, you know, some developers don't have the upfront cash, and so this could work to help them out. But as it sits right now with the inspection fees, when you add up all the fees and everything like this, it didn't work for him.
Okay, so I will tell you, I'm not going to cut you off. I want to caution speaking with contractors about the money they're going to spend. So I would say, spoken like a true contractor. It's always too high. It's never, you know, and so we want to be careful in how much we let them draft this, because before you know it, we will be putting in everything, and it'll still be too high. So there has to be some reasonable expectation on our part as to what these utilities cost. I say they cost $100 a foot, and I would expect a contractor to come back and go, "No, no, no, we can do it for 50." I'm looking out for the city, okay? And I want to make sure that the city's covered in this. And I will tell you that with the experience I have, the conversations I've had, taking advantage of this program would be financially encouraging for them, as for prevailing wage and all of that doesn't play into this, because Option A is the amendment we're making, and the city's installing that. So we don't pay prevailing wage. We're paying our staff to go out and install it, and the contractor doesn't touch it, right? It's a set fee, flat, okay? So then Option B goes back to the contractor installing it, the way we do now. Excluding electric and gas. So...
And that's my thing, I don't understand what prevailing wage even comes in here, because we're paying city employees their hourly pay to go out there.
I understand.
And we don't pay prevailing wage.
When you read this, it's in there.
Prevailing wage isn't in here.
Number 10.
Number 2?
Exhibit A, number 10.
That's Exhibit B. Exhibit A is an option for a contractor to have the city do it instead of a contractor. It's an option for the developer to have the city do it instead of the contractor doing it.
I understand.
Option B is for them to do it exactly the same way they're doing it as before, like that's written the same way, except for it's got an inspection fee. That's the only difference in B.
That's the only difference was our inspection fee.
So the prevailing wage that's in 10 of Section B is exactly like 10 of Section B was before.
And the Missouri Department of Labor guidelines that it's talking about there only implies if they are installing it for the city. So if the city goes out, right, these guys are under no direct labor guidelines from the Missouri Department of Labor, being a private individual contractor, only if they use public monies. So what's that mean? What if we get 10 guys on the list that want to take advantage of this? Well, in here, if you also read, there is a waiting list, and you are put on that list based upon the order, right? Well, what if the city wants to improve their service to our contractors and try to get through the list a little quicker? That gives us the ability to bid these out, right? Well, if we bid them out, now we're using public money, they have to bid it prevailing wage, yes. But if they install it themselves, we're not, we have no say over that other than how it's installed. It has to be per specs, per code, per design, everything like that.
I understand that. Now, we kind of got the horse before the cart here. We should be reading the ordinance and then discussing. Could we read that ordinance, please?
Yes. Bill number 2021-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 420 of the Municipal Code Regarding Subdivision Requirements Fixing an Effective Date. Second reading, an ordinance amending Chapter 420 of the Municipal Code Regarding Subdivision Requirements Fixing an Effective Date.
Now we can finish the discussion.
I'm good. I'll have a little talk.
No other discussion? A call for motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion.
Mr. Davis?
Second up.
We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Utility Committee. Mr. France?
Yeah. I called the committee to order at 3:30. We had all of the members, myself and Mr. Wilson were present. Mr. Connolly was indisposed. Butch O'Reilly came in with citizen's comments, and he wanted to talk to us about the level pay program. Basically, he's been a member of that for in excess of 20 years in his current residence. He bought another residence, but a significant, a house that's about half the size of his current residence. And the way the ordinance reads, he would have to live in that new house for one year before he could rejoin level pay. Even though we know that his bills without, I mean, should be definitely lower, since it's half the square footage, and it's a much newer house, so it has, you know, better things going into it, as windows, insulation, those types of things. And so he wanted to see if there could be some provision made that could allow for stuff like that. We discussed that, you know, some families, you know, you move in as a single, as a small couple, you have children, and boom, you've got to have a bigger house. So it may not work in every case. So basically, what we want as a committee is we authorize the city administrator and the utility head billing clerk, Tracy Ewart, to make a conscious decision on a case-by-case basis to be added to that ordinance for level pay, to where they could drop down the time necessary to establish a new level paid amount. But that only deals with citizens of Wayne'sville and moving within Wayne'sville, okay? So that was one action. And then we have Mr. Vanny Williams, who lives down off Rochester Road and was requesting gas service. He came in wanting to know what the problem is with getting gas, and quite honestly, all the work had not been done to tell him how much, basically, the gas service was cost, because we didn't know where the pipeline actually sat at that point in time. So we basically said, hey, let's wait to find out, let's locate the pipeline, then we'll be much better capable of telling you what getting that service to you is. Because when that neighborhood was annexed, we put gas line out there, but at that time, we said we would do free gas to anyone who wanted it. But that was back when we annexed it, with the sewer and everything like this. So now, if we have to cut the street, it's like $3,500 to where, you know, and the gentleman who talked to him isn't the person that really is responsible for doing that. And so I says, why don't we find out where the pipelines are, and we'll have the gentleman talk to you, and he can give you the real actual cost of what it would take to establish natural gas to your residents. And he was happy with that. Now, I'm not sure he will be happy with the final outcome, but we're going, we're putting the right stuff in order for him. And then we had Mr. Mark Cortesini, he addressed a few about concerns with the natural gas prices during this billing cycle. And basically, he had heard a lot of things, and he was confused. When he left our meeting, he was quite happy. He also talked to us about raising the level of the street up in that area of Skyline, 10 feet. And so we said, you'll have to wait, we'll get some people up there, they'll have to take a look at it. Saying 10 feet here in City Hall is not standing up there on the property, see how it affects all the other properties and others in that area, as well as utilities where they currently exist. We vary them 10 feet. More than where they're already at, we could be talking 13, 15 foot deep. So there's a lot of things to look at when you're talking about raising a street or future development. And that's what he's wanting to do, is put in about six houses. He's got a couple entities he indicated that have commercial possibilities, that are also possibly wanting to build on this property up there above the school. And ultimately, he would like to partner with us in putting in the road that he talked about about two, three years ago, you know, something like that, which at that time, we absolutely said, no. So that addressed all three of those. We did some modifications to the MPUA committee assignments to spread the wealth. Level pay agreement, we modified that as I indicated. Natural gas, no discussion was held, committee received a copy of the ordinance in regard to it. And we talked about the COP project breakdown. The Low Chevrolet property, we've already know, we're going to pay that off, that loan we got on it with COP money. The electric substation, or the design and the building of the new electrical facility, not the substation, we'll have everything in place so a future council, should they determine that putting that in is necessary. But we're moving the electrical department from downtown on 17th up onto that building, as well as moving the whole storage yard out of the stump dump up into this area. We're establishing the electric department up there. That's what that's about. We're going to recapture the 2014 COP. Trash and sanitation, we're ending up our first year, so in a year, another year, we'll be able to start our own. And that's when our contract with St. Robert runs out, that we voted on last year. Utility extension work and public works, the same. Mr. Go, we'll discuss the project breakdown, about 6 million COP. I would tell you that I also brought up that, you know, the Hicks-McCarlin people have owned the property next to Low Chevrolet and the Burger King, the gas station down there, for seven or eight years. And they've had people wanting to go there, but various things took place to where it never got, nothing happened. I really think that we should not have Wayne'sville owning that property for another seven, eight, 10 years. And I think the best way to handle that is that we get Risky Road coming down, so there's two ways of access and egress out of that property, make it more marketable. Because we've already got electric over there, there's sewer over there, we've got the basic utilities there, with the exception of transportation. And if we can come off the Buckhorn exit with 18-wheelers bringing stuff down into their vehicles, then, and coming out on Icord Avenue or going in off Icord to Discovery to Risky and going out Buckhorn, I think that will definitely help in the development of it. And we have spent money on, in the past years, on initial engineering, and there's quite a bit of new work to be done. So anyhow, moving on, department updates, gas department. We've completed our blocking of our gas lines. We've also finished checking out our cathartic protection and finished the annual blocking of lines and submitted our reports to DNR. Electric department, Mr. Sheldon stated that his department has two power outages, six streetlight work orders, three trees, six miscellaneous, and two new services. One meter test and two service upgrades for the month of March. A few major highlights included due to February's polyvortex. Some weaknesses were found within our system. Two single-phase reclosers, which were overloaded during the cold snap, were bypassed and sent out to upsize their trip loads. They went from 50 amp to 70 amp trip loads and are back and are already back online. And extend our underground primary in Briar Point for a new build. Water insurer, Mr. Eldridge, stated that his department fixed a leak on Hospital Road, had four tank inspections completed by Moet applicators, and well number three hadn't been repaired. No one saw lightning, no one saw a storm, we didn't even have rain, but we got a lightning strike somehow on the well, right there at the corner of Icord and 17th. So we had to replace the pump. I mean, it had a arc, an electrical arc burn in the motor, all the way across, looked like a smiley face on it. So we got a lightning strike somehow, somewhere, and then. There was a necessity for a closed session in regards to revised statutes of Missouri 610.021, Subprogram 1, and motion was made by Councilman Connolly to go into the closed session at 4:54, and a second by Mr. Wilson. Motion carried at 5:03, the committee came out of closed session. Motion was made by Councilman Wilson to move the ordinance amending Chapter 420 of the Municipal Code Regarding Subdivision Requirements to Planning and Zoning. And it was seconded and recommended by all, and adjourned, we adjourned at 5:04. Next meeting will be May 4, 2021, at 3:30 PM here in City Hall. All people are invited, subject to your questions.
Any questions from Mr. France?
I've got one.
Okay.
I know enough about electric to be dangerous, so...
What?
I said, I know enough about electric to be dangerous. The wellhouse, we know it was a clear day, no lightning, that we don't hear.
We have put in the most extensive grounding system on that particular well, because that well gets lightning... lightning strikes often. So the electric department, we sent in there, they've got a grid outside of that thing in the ground to diffuse this. But lightning comes with a lot of static electricity, over a million watts.
As many times as that's been hit, that's why I was wondering, could there be a electric full charge of some kind of backfilling?
So we actually have run several, you know, we've run several tests and this actually comes back as lightning. And it's very strange, lightning will have a certain impact on the casing of a motor and it's pretty indicative of lightning because electric wouldn't do that. Electric would actually be, electric surges would diffuse prior to making it down to the pump. Lightning makes it to the pump and it'll blow two holes or more holes, but there'll be holes in the bottom of the casing of the pump. And when they pulled it up, the guy said lightning and, you know, I'm like, I don't remember anything that would cause, you know, this.
It was a nice day that day.
Yeah, but when they, when they got to the bottom of it, he pulled it up. He said, I know what this is, you know, and he sees hundreds across the state. And like Mike said, we spent, I asked, I asked Jack Eldridge, our water wastewater superintendent there, I asked him, I said, you know, when was the last time? Two years ago. Two years ago, we replaced this very, very pump, this very place, and, you know, the system was installed. So it's, it's pretty incredible, really.
Isn't there a website that shows all the lightning strikes in the United States?
Mm-hmm, there is.
Was there one on?
I didn't look, I didn't look. So I asked, you know, some of the things, keep in mind, now, the lightning can hit, and as long as it doesn't, I would say, short circuit the electrical power, it can take time for the pump to go bad. It's kind of like when lightning strikes your house. You may, it may actually take your freezer out, but it may take three days for it to slowly get to that process. So you have a window there of, you know, of time. I'm going to say, my guess is probably a week or less, but, you know, when, we use Flynn Drilling, very reputable, they're used a lot across the state and, I mean, there was no doubt in his mind when he seen the bottom of the casing.
And we did turn it into insurance since it was a lightning strike.
With a letter from him stating that that is, that is what he sees, this is what it is.
Further questions? We do have a proposed resolution, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-five. Could you please read the resolution, please?
Resolution appointing the city of Waynesville director and alternate director to the Missouri Public Utility Alliance, Missouri Association of Municipal Utilities, Missouri Public Energy Pool, Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission and Municipal Gas Commission of Missouri.
Discussions?
Second.
No, no discussions on this, we're all happy with that. Mr. France, Mr. Connolly, roll call vote.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Economic Development. Mr. Farnum.
Okay, Economic Development had been on April sixth at five PM. We had no citizens' comments. We approved the minutes from the previous month. Mr. Doyle gave us some information on the non-playground scrap tire material grant. Application has been submitted to two ADA eight-foot pickled tables and six regular eight-foot pickled tables, total cost of seventy-five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. The table was placed under the Farm of Market Pavilion for special events, taking for maybe forty percent scrap tires generated in Missouri. He also informed us of the CWSRF grant, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Regionalization Incentive Grant. I see what they use after that. Anyway, the application was submitted in December and unfortunately, the project did not get approved by DNR. American Rescue Plan was another conversation that we had. On March sixth, the US Senate passed the American Rescue Plan of twenty-twenty-one and the Department of Treasury will oversee it, administer payments to state multiple governments. We discussed what we thought the city of Waynesville would receive, and it's going to be in the neighborhood, if everything is correct, nine-hundred-and-fifty-some thousand dollars. So when we'll get it, we don't really know at this point. We discussed the business spotlight and as we've seen earlier, price cover was the April business after today. May, we discussed nominated rocket offsets and June dragon. Committee nominated shelter insurance for the month of July and Swinson's problems for this for the month of August. Special events, May twenty-second, uncommon brotherhood, no child goes hungry event at Ruby Park from twelve PM to seven PM. Having no further business, meeting adjourned at five forty-four.
Questions for Mr. Farnum. Police committee, Mr. Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at three-thirty. There were no citizens' comments. There was a need for closed session, meaning committee entered closed session, three-thirty-one, back in open session, four thirty-six. March eleventh, meeting minutes approved. Chief Curova discussed the youth alcohol enforcement campaign and the police department was awarded one-thousand-one-hundred dollars in grant funds for this campaign, which begins April thirtieth and ends May ninth. Employee update, there's a need to schedule interviews with three applicants for an open position in the police department and we need to set up a date for that. Having no further business, meeting adjourned, four fifty-eight. Next scheduled meeting as May thirteenth at three-thirty.
Any questions for Mr. Liberty? Roads and Grounds, Councilman France?
Called the meeting to order at four o'clock on April first. Members were present, there were no citizens' comments. We approved the minutes from our March fourth meeting. First item of discussion was parking on the square, whereas the sheriff's department has now moved down to the new jail in totality. They have requested four parking spots that's adjacent to their, the old entrance to the sheriff's department on the same side, basically on that side where the old stagecoach stops at. So Mr. Doyle, Streets and Grounds are going to head down, measured it, and that, and they're going to have the ordinance rewritten to reflect the changes. It used to be so many linear feet of parking, do you remember, there was like eleven or twelve spots all the way around the corner and that. So it's all, the ordinance is being redone to reflect the new parking access on that side, around the courthouse. We also talked about Lynn Street, you know, when the sheriff gets a call out towards Buckhorn area, they've been coming up a one-way street, Lynn Street, so they wanted to kind of change that road. Well, that road's not wide enough to have parking on one side, which it does currently now, as well as have two-way traffic. And so basically, committee voted to continue one-way and also raise the stop sign down there at the corner of Lynn and School, but retain the two-way park, make sure the sheriff's department understands that, that they can go out to Seventeen, come through the light on Seventeen, or go over towards Benton Street and come out that area from their facility that's got a gate on it, right off on Benton, so, but continue the two-way, one-way parking allowed and one-way going north. Street Department update, street department has been busy patching potholes, helped MoDOT with sweeping the roads. Instead of them bringing in their sweeper truck, they, we allow them to use ours. Delivered gravel to the RV park after that little flood accident, helped the electric department by trimming brush along Route sixty-six, put gravel down on Superior Road after the flooding, painted City Hall parking lot and started installing speed bumps in the park. Councilman Farnum questioned what the state statutes were on having speed bumps in the park. Chairman France would like to move forward with speed bumps in relation to Olive Street, however, hold off on Pine and Benton pending legal review. Councilman Connolly made a motion to go ahead with all speed bumps pending legal review. Councilman Farnum seconded the motion, motion passed. Snow route, all members of the committee were handed out a map of the current priorities when we have snow or initial plowing and that. And it's being looked at, it'll be reviewed, and they will determine if there needs to be changes or additions to it in the future. But we firmly believe we have enough time to complete that prior to our next snow. Crosswalks, two new crosswalks for the downtown square area were proposed at the corner of North Benton and North Street and at the corner of North Lynn and North Street. Other business, citizen called and would like the bridge at Glenda Drive to be accessible for walking and biking across. If you don't know, that's off Skyline area, it used to be like when Dire Street had the old.
Low water.
Yeah, low water crossing, that was the only way to get out. That was a rickety, dangerous little access then. We have closed it off since we put in the bridge. The bridge has never been overtopped and that. But, and this bridge, we actually think was put in by a private citizen years and years ago. So Mr. Doyle, I'm going to look at it, but we're not sure about spending any money whatsoever to make it walkable or bicycle, but that will be handled at future committee. Mr. Doyle will inspect the bridge and see what he can be done. There was a discussion of the Icord property near Wellhouse number two. The property would be a great addition to the city and placing light poles around the RV park area because they use that one unmoated area as a soccer field. And you can see the little kids out there practicing of an evening, so kind of nice to have some lights out there possibly, not so much in the RV portion, I mean, you don't want lights trying to sleep in your upper peat.
Putting on a timer.
Yeah. Or they, yeah. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at five oh-one PM. Next scheduled meeting will be May sixth at four PM. All citizens are invited to attend.
Any questions for Mr. France?
Yes.
I'd like to comment on speed bumps versus speed humps. I'm not an attorney, not a legal, paralegal, anything like that, not even a great computer expert, but I did go online and do some research. And apparently, when speed bumps are on private property, they're back speed bumps. When they're on city streets, they're called street humps. I have no idea why. Several years ago, the city of Lawrence was trying to put speed humps in its park and they passed an ordinance, as a matter of fact, what very similar to what we were talking about. The mayor vetoed it, saying it was illegal by state statute. The city attorney disagreed with it. And they reached out to MoDOT and MoDOT never responded to it. So that's the, I also did a word search through the car shows and a word speed bump doesn't, or speed hump doesn't have much.
Ed, did it say anything in there that they got the attorney general's opinion on the speed hump, speed bump?
No.
Mr. Rice? I was going to say, can the car shows, like K-State Cruisers, can they get their cars over once a set below?
They're not going to be walkable, you know.
Well, they have those. Some of those have low riders.
Yeah.
And their show cars are real low, are we going to have a way for them to go around it?
They bring the way with them.
They what?
They bring the way with them.
Oh, they bring ramps or something?
They're used to speed bumps and speed humps being in locations where they're at. They bring like a dual ramp type thing that's connected.
These are removable.
Okay.
Okay. So if that became a problem with merely removing for the period of the show.
Mr. Davis is right, though, they'll have a way.
Yeah, they bring it up with.
Yeah.
Yes.
The parking area, are they going to be marked?
Yes.
For law enforcement?
Yes, law enforcement only, four spots.
Very good.
Thank you.
One last thing on the Lynn Street, Lynn Street and School Street had someone call about, there was two stop signs down there. Are they going to put the other stop sign back or is it going to be, the one is catty corners, you go.
You got, this one here, come down Lynn Street, North Lynn?
Yes.
And then the one near the old library area?
Yes.
Yeah. They should, that, they should both be maintained intact, but one of them was too low.
Okay.
The one on Lynn Street.
One of them was voted to take out. School Street was voted by the committee to be a through street.
Okay.
From Seventeenth to our, to our park.
Because the police, the sheriff's department been moving through, they're having priority.
Okay, they were complaining that you can't see around the hill when you go down Lynn Street, someone coming this way, you can't see.
There's a stop sign at that corner and you can see around the corner.
Well, that's what, that's what I was.
I don't see any problem with the height of that through street line either. You did, that's one we did raise.
That's right.
So it's going to be a through street now?
It was, yes, it's been a through street, that's been two meetings ago, one to two meetings ago is when we first started addressing the traffic and traffic flow around the new Justice Center.
Other questions?
My last question is, would it be rude to put a police car there whenever they went the wrong way down a one-way street that pick them? Would that be rude?
From my personal experiences, it would be perfectly legal for an emergency vehicle to ride the wrong way out of one-way street.
I'll go with that.
Yes. However, if that emergency vehicle is involved in an accident while you're going the wrong way, it's on that agency.
Would that emergency vehicle have to happen?
It's legal, it's legal as long as you don't cause an accident.
It has, it's not an emergency vehicle unless it has license or, but there is an RSM on the cover.
I was just being facetious.
Well, thank you.
Finance and human resources, Mr. Liberty.
Committee was called to order. Minutes were approved, committee approved paying bills, that's always a nice thing. Committee reviewed city's cash flow reports, bank status and year-to-date budget. City has completed twenty-five percent of fiscal year with expenses tracking at twenty-six percent and revenues tracking at thirty-one percent. Committee reviewed the city's fund balance reserve policy that requires ten to fifteen percent of the city's operating budget to be kept in available funds. City currently has four-point-three million in available funds and is in compliance with the fund balance reserve policy. Committee forward resolution authorizing the offering for sale tax exempt certificates of participation series two-oh-two-one-A and taxable refunding of certificates of participation series two-oh-two-one-B to city council for final approval. Committee reviewed project list two-thousand-twenty-one, certificates of participation also discussed, follow timelines for the certificates of participation. There was a need for closed session, committee went closed session, returned to open session and committee adjourned. Next meeting will be May thirteenth at five PM.
Questions for Mr. Liberty? We have a proposed ordinance, twenty-twenty-one dash zero-zero-six. Reading, please.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash zero-six, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of tax exempt certificates of participation, city of Waynesville, Missouri, lessee, series twenty-twenty-one-A and taxable refunding certificates of participation, city of Waynesville, Missouri, lessee, series twenty-twenty-one-B.
Call for motion?
Motion.
Mr. Curtis? Mr. Davis? Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board, Mr. Wilson.
Okay, on March twenty-third, the board convened at three PM. We had several visitors, I won't go through and list all of the guests, but Chairman Larson called the meeting to order. February twenty-third, the minutes were approved, the budget was approved, also some great information. Also, some great information as far as expansion, future expansion with the airport. From the airport operations manager, of course, the fuel sales was up, which is always good. The DLF, the, the DLA fuel site inspection was completed on February twenty-fourth, and we'll know the results by May, April, so I'm sure there'll be some, something to share at the next meeting, which is in a, in a, about a week and a half. Also, flights should pick back up at the airport, which will result in, of course, more fuel sales. There is a military dependent that will be stationed here in the, in the near future that is AP and IA qualified, which are like mechanic qualifications through FAA. So, this is gonna look good for us in the, in the near future as far as possible expansion in other areas. And we'll schedule a meeting with the airport manager. When he gets here, the mechanic shop in Camden Town has an apprentice that is interested in opening up a shop at the Fort Leonard Wood Airport. Also, Camden Town Airport is limping in their runway, and this is gonna be beneficial for us because they're gonna redirect traffic to our airport, which will again increase fuel sales in the operation at our location. Contour airline update, March is on track for a good month, and we'll get those employment numbers, of course, at the next meeting, which is gonna be on April twenty-seventh. As far as Tampa update, the appropriating state funds, temporary improvement, meetings with Burns and McDonald was discussed, and there were funds that are still available. And there was a discussion on how the funding would be appropriate, appropriated. MODOT Aviation does not currently see any issues with the city's retaining and remaining state appropriation funds for the airport. As far as our runway extension, there will be, there was a stakeholder meeting that was held in February, which addressed the reevaluating of the, the runway length to accommodate larger carriers in the future. Current FFA design standards and items in place caused declared distances and thereby limiting the length of the use of the runway. As far as the EAS bids, they were due on the fifteenth of, of April. We'll have those updates here. I don't know if there, is there anything that we need to say on that?
No.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the TVN base, proposed lease area expansion. A map was provided of the proposed lease area expansion. This provides an additional point five acres of a lease area, too, and is based on a preliminary dimension estimate for a terminal building and aircraft parking apron. SOP marketing, the social media sites are receiving positive feedback as far as usage on Twitter and Instagram and also Facebook. As far as the terminal trailer update, all issues have been addressed and utilities are up and running per our issues. The next meeting was, will be on Tuesday, April twenty-second at 3:00 PM at the St. Robert Municipal Center with no further business. The meeting adjourned at 3:46 PM.
Questions for Mr. Wilson? Other business?
Gonna rereport, reappoint Mike Dunbar, Dun, get it out right, Dunbar, to the Board of Adjustments. We need a motion just to show it. Motion? Is there a motion for that?
Dunbar, second.
Show hands this time, you wanna...
Roll call. Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes. Resolution, please.
Resolution number twenty twenty dash zero seven. Resolution appointing certain members to the Board of Directors of the Central Ozark Utility Service Alliance LLC Co-U.S.A., fixing an effective date.
Have a motion? Or discussion first? Mr. Conley?
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
I thought he was gonna make comments.
You wanna comment? Or did you wanna comment?
No.
You make, okay.
Oh, okay.
Roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, amending chapter one-ten concerning city council. Reading, please.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, an ordinance amending chapter one-ten of the Waynesville Municipal Code regarding committees of the city council fixing an effective date. Second reading, bill number twenty twenty-one dash seventeen, an ordinance amending chapter one-ten of the Waynesville Municipal Code regarding committees of the city council fixing an effective date.
Discussion?
Can I go before you?
Go for it.
Parents, before, you know, we open up this can of worms. And this is gonna kinda sound, you know, a little odd, you know, how I am about over execute government and stuff. This ordinance restricts city council members to vote on other city council members to not leave them, I guess you could say. In my opinion, and this is just my opinion, my opinion counts most to me, for somebody to elect us from the city and then us as a council to say, we don't trust those votes for you to vote for somebody that leads you in a committee, I, I just really don't think it should be done, in my opinion. And that's my opinion.
I agree, and it wasn't posted for twenty-four hours ahead of time.
That's all right, but we already voted that resolution in at the beginning of it. So, I mean, we said we were gonna discuss it, we said we were gonna talk about it. It's gonna be voted on regardless of what, but in my opinion, to restrict city council members that are elected officials to elect their own committee chairperson, I just, I don't mean, I, I think it's overdoing something. I, I think it's been fine the way it is, you know? If I'm sitting there and, and Councilman Wilson's sitting there and Councilman Farnum's sitting there, if us three cannot decide who should lead us three as city council members, I don't think we should be sitting there.
I agree, there's no, there's no need to restrict committees from allowing somebody to be chairman of this committee and chairman of that committee. It's, that makes no sense at all.
Yep, it's all made good arguments, but I have an entirely different outlook on this part. Section one says each committee shall meet promptly after the appointment. And that needs to be changed to, if it's the next regular meeting of that committee, is that prompt or is prompt right now? So, that, that particular line needs to reflect. If the ordinance passes, that line needs to be changed to reflect at the next meeting.
At, at next, and I can see that, but, but I don't think there should be anything out there that says, Councilman Davis, you can't select somebody who, who runs the committee control. Because the mayor assigns us the committees. We trust the mayor's leadership because somebody elected him, right? And then we're elected officials. I would hope that they would trust us the same way to elect somebody to run a committee that we're on.
I agree. To restrict them is wrong. You're telling somebody that they don't have the right to elect somebody chairman.
One of the big thoughts of this was to spread this information among new council members. Sometimes new council member will feel somewhat intimidated and go with the flow. You'll have the same person year after year after year, his committee, committee chairman. This, this allows everyone to have a chance to be a committee member, a committee chairman.
I've had, tell me, they didn't wanna be chairman.
Well, that's their choice, but...
Yeah, but you're saying if they don't wanna be chairman, then where you gonna get a chairman from if the judge couldn't have a no?
You get an old council member there.
They're grown men, they're not intimidated, and women, sorry.
And, and that's what I was gonna say. I would hope that they're not intimidated just to go, okay, sure, you're, you're in charge because you've been in charge for the past fifty years, that thing. Because I would think I would have the strength and leadership to, to stand up for them, and that's the reason I was elected.
And I don't know anybody on this council that doesn't have several years of leadership. Hope to share a leadership is not a good excuse.
That's not an excuse, Clarence. That is, that is, you know, I, I don't know if you've been a part, we have five committees, three chairs, okay? And I will tell you that your boards and they're not ran, so, so a committee meeting is ran like this meeting. And you take votes, you ask for votes, right? We're sending things to council, you need a motion in a second, and it just allows everybody to take a part of that process. I don't know too many people outside of you guys, you know, as, as councilmen, that get the opportunity to run a meeting such that Robert's Rules of Orders takes place, right? So, you have several different items that take place. I know Sean is a part of the airport board, but he doesn't run that. That is actually chaired by somebody, okay? Planning and zoning is chaired by somebody, you're a part of it. So, I, I was just, I, I think some of the intent is like Doc Brown said, to give everybody the, the opportunity. It also gives all members the opportunity to run a meeting like this. And, and I do respect your guys' uh, that's a very good point, Cecil, that you made and that, you know, that's, but that wasn't the intent. It had absolutely no discussion on the, the trusting of the council members or, that was never discussed at all at, at any level. We, we trust all of your guys' opinions and, you know, we take them, your comments very seriously. We, we take them very seriously as, as they come out to the, you know, from the committees or otherwise. So, that's, that's why we're here.
And I think if, if we want the chairman to change the committee or whatever, it's, I think the council members have enough common sense to go, okay, I think you've been there too long, I'm tired of listening to you on this committee.
Yep.
Somebody else needs to be in charge, as well as the mayor. You know, he, he put his committee list out tonight. Some of the people who were previous chairmans above the committees are now, not even on that committee anymore. So, it'd be kinda hard to elect them as the, as the committee chairman and they're not even on there anymore. They've, they've been passed on to somewhere else. So, so the mayor actually did his due diligence and, you know, he, he might have said, well, maybe this person's been on there too long, maybe some experience with something else or whatever, and then, you know, and then we can see it too. So, I'm, I'm just saying that.
And I, I said, I just wanted to clarify that I don't want this anyway to be, the intent of, of this had nothing to do with trust or, you know, I don't, we're getting way off of the path of the intent, okay?
John, the thing that really got me about it was I, excuse me, I came over a paper utility bill yesterday, here with the clerk, picked up my package, and then today I find an email about lunchtime with this ordinance. And our meeting was to start at 5:00 PM, so that gave me five hours. That's too short of a time for a decision. And I, I can see both sides. I can see what the mayor and you're wanting to do is expand people's leadership, give them the opportunities. I can see all of it. But you only give us, you know, five hours' time, you know, that's, to me, is not right. We need time to study everything so we make the best decision that we can make for the city.
Can we table this for a month?
Yeah, you, you can. That's an option.
I'll make a motion, we table this for one month.
Actually, we can postpone, we can't table it.
Okay.
Your elections are before your next council meeting.
That's, that is, you'll have that.
It's amazing why.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah. That's why we had it today, so we could get it done.
That goes, that goes back to what I was saying, with only five hours, you know?
Was this just thought up?
No.
Then it should've come out before.
It should've, but it didn't. It's only committee meeting tonight. It's only intended.
Well, that's, that's why they have such thing as the sunshine law.
And I discussed this with our city clerk, who I think is very competent, and her thoughts are that this certainly does not make any big conflict with such...
Well, Mr. Man, I'm very confident.
When it comes to amending agenda and adding something to the agenda, as long as it is noted in the minutes why it was done, then we're good to go. And like we just said, the reason for putting it on the agenda tonight is because council, like what Councilman France said, committee meetings are coming up this next month, that when chairmans are elected. So, we postpone it till next month.
Didn't make any sense to...
So, so I say we're probably gonna vote on this and whatever way it goes, that's the way the democratic process works?
Exactly.
The RSMO says different.
Well, actually, the RSMO does not. Actually, the RSMO states...
Okay, that's, I, I don't think we need to...
Any other discussion?
No, go into that.
I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say it.
Mr. France? Roll call, please.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
No.
Councilman Rice?
No.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Farnum?
No.
For no, for, um, yeah, so...
I vote in favor of this, for this.
Motion passes.
That was fun. Let's go to something better.
Bill will wild sometimes.
Mike, you don't have to get up. Actually, those aren't the committee we'd like to come down here. Actually, all of us could come down if we'd like, present Mike with this, thank you for all your years of dedicated service to the city council and the utility committee. Rest of you wanna come down?
It's safe.
Is he gonna stay seated?
No, you can't show that. You have, I don't get mentioned here to a public board.
Yeah.
Look up the stairs here.
Oh, boy. Goodness gracious.
For sure, whether you might have to take a knee or sit in your chair.
I see.
Thank you.
Come a little bit closer.
Don't be like...
Your action here, too.
Don't be so serious.
Mike, thank you.
You have a good and you do want to...
Yes.
Okay, swearing in of the new council members.
Actually, we need to, um, we need to vote on this.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a little agreement.
One step again.
That's what this is about.
Just certify the election results.
You can confirm it.
Call for motion to approve?
Motion.
Roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Are we allowed to vote if we were here?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Oh, come on.
Yes, for everybody.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, swearing in of the new city council members. All right, one new and two, three of them.
Three.
Michelle, you want to all down one time?
Yes. The Councilman Farnum, Councilman...
Liberty?
Liberty, Councilman Wilson, and Councilman Amanda Corin.
Councilwoman Dunbar. She said she would.
Congratulations, I didn't say that.
Where you want us at?
Um...
Me, too.
I'm gonna make it sound like you.
We're in the way.
We're in the way.
You want us to be in ward order?
Yeah, he can take that way.
Ward order, one, two, three, four.
Wait a minute. These are auto-labs.[1779.12]
These are auto-locked.
I don't have a license on that.
Are you planning?
No, he's not.
Now you're shot.
He gave me mine.
I think we, I think we know it was.
You don't look like mine either.
Okay.
I don't think they have.
Ladies and gentlemen, raise your right hand if you'd like for me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of city councilman.
The duties of the office of the city councilman.
Of the city of Waynesville, Missouri.
Of the city of Waynesville, Missouri.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitutions of the United States.
Constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provision of all the laws of the state.
The provision of all laws of the state.
Affecting cities of the third class.
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully. I shall faithfully. Conduct myself in office.
Conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences.
And respect the confidences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
Congratulations.
We need to make that blow.
Bill.
Come on, Mayor. Get in there.
On my autograph?
Congratulations again.
As long as you sign the white one and get it back to me, you can keep the other.
Congratulations again.
Yep. It's your first one, keep the pen.
It's like two sentences.
It's mine. But it's yours now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah? I'm pretty sure. That bar is not set very hot.
Lots of smiles. Thank you. Election of mayor pro temp. I call for a motion to not make the mayor pro temp.
I'll make a motion. Councilman Liberty.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can we do another one?
No. Oh, it's one motion.
Have to, have to vote, and if that vote don't go, then.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilman Corrigan?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, swearing in of the new city council members. Or one new and two, three of the elected.
Three.
Michelle, you went all out and went that.
Yes. The Councilman Farnum, Councilman.
Liberty?
Liberty, Councilman Wilson, and Councilman Amanda Corrigan.
Councilwoman. She said that she would. Congratulations. I didn't say that. Where are you on it then?
Um.
Want us to be in ward order? Ward order. One, two, three, four.
Wait a minute. These are auto-locked.
I don't have a license on that.
Are you planning?
No, he's not.
He gave me mine.
I think we, I think we know it was.
You don't look like mine either.
Okay.
I don't think they have.
Ladies and gentlemen, raise your right hand if you'd like for me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
And I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of city councilman.
The duties of the office of the city councilman.
Of the city of Waynesville, Missouri.
Of the city of Waynesville, Missouri.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitutions of the United States.
Constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provision of all the laws of the state.
The provision of all laws of the state.
Affecting cities of the third class.
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Conduct myself in office.
Conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences.
And respect the confidences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
Congratulations.
We need to make that blow.
Congratulations.
Bill.
Come on, Mayor. Get in there.
On my autograph?
Congratulations. Congratulations again.
As long as you sign the white one and get it back to me, you can keep the other.
Congratulations again.
Yep. It's your first one, keep the pen.
It's like two sentences.
It's mine. But it's yours now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's your first one, keep the pen.
It's mine. But it's yours now.
Congratulations.
Yep.
That bar is not set very hot.
No. I'm ready to serve. Lots of smiles. Thank you.
Thank you.
Election of mayor pro temp. I call for a motion to not make the mayor pro temp.
I'll make a motion. Councilman Liberty.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can we do another one?
No. Oh, it's one motion.
Have to, have to vote, and if that vote don't go, then.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilman Corrigan?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
I guess.
Councilman Farnum.
Thank you, buddy.
Committee appointments, the list has been distributed. The city set up committees usually controlled by, well, represented by three of the council people. We do encourage any and all people and the citizens of this coun, this Waynesville to please attend all meetings. It's more for your information, you pass on what we vote on, and we appreciate more and more information. If it's just the three of us in the committee or three members based on what they talk among themselves or among the citizens they meet, is what we vote on. We would appreciate even more information from the citizens. And by the way, the times and places for these meetings are on our website, so please avail yourself to that. We call for a motion to approve the committee assignments. Show of hands will be fine.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Conley?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Da, Mr. Wilson?
Mm-hmm.
Now, that was first and second.
Yep. Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Corrigan. I'm going to say France, I'm sorry.
Goodness. Yes.
City administrators report.
So go over some of the things that, um, maybe hasn't been touched on too much. Um, obviously working still very hard on the electric agreement between the city of Waynesville and Show Me. That continues to be a, uh, an agreement that we are striving to bring to the finish line and complete. Um, February utility bills have been delivered. We've had a lot of conversation between customers and the city, um, but things seem to generally be, be going well. Uh, everybody was, uh, has generally been, been, um, excited about the attempts that, that we've made to, to contact them, make them aware, um, bring them up to date on, on what's going on, the information that we've, um, provided them through this process. Uh, utility rate studies, uh, last year probably in the utility committee October timeframe, I, it could have been September, but I'm thinking closer October, November utility committee meeting. Um, we set forth some goals for this year, and the goals were to, um, begin a rate study of each of the utilities within the city. Um, we find that to be very valuable to not only the committee but the council and, and the community. Um, they're able to look at our rate. These, this rate study that we are currently going through, they are, uh, addressing the electric rate first, um, then subsequent sewer, water, natural gas. I'm not sure that's the order, but we will be looking at all of them. We, we will get a lot of mileage out of this utility rate study that they provide us. Um, 2021 COP, we've discussed that, uh, quite a bit tonight. Uh, one thing I'm going to end on and, and very proud of is the city of Waynesville webpage fully functioning. I, I encourage you guys to go out, look at this website, look at the, the new, um, information it has to offer as compared to the old website. There are, uh, it is, it's really incredible the amount of work that was completed, uh, and put together in such a short time. There's a lot of benefits to the new website, and that's something I'm very proud to offer you guys tonight and, and go look at that on, throughout the next month.
Do we have timeframe for rate studies?
So the initial electric rate study, uh, last, last October, we, our goal was to complete one per quarter. Um, the electric seems to be maybe one of the most, um, complex ones. So it's gonna, I think around May and is, is, we should have some information with the electric around May Clarence. Um, I don't know, sewer and water are kind of tandem. Um, sewer will be a little bit more complex than the water because obviously the city has, you know, agreements with outside entities with, for treatment and things like that. Um, so water shouldn't take long. We're gonna, we, we may not make that timeframe one each quarter, but we will be very close, okay? Um, I look for natural gas and water to go quickly. Sewer will take a little while, and I'm hopeful by the end of May, we have an electric rate study that we can discuss in detail through a couple committees. This, this is not just a utility committee discussion, this will also go through, uh, um, finances as utility brings stuff up. We're going to bring this through the finance committee and, you know, discuss the pros and cons of, uh, uh, what that rate study tells us. Mike made it very clear, I think last, Mike France did, the old chairman made it very clear the last meeting. We have seen these before, and we are under the rate that will be, um, recommended by the engineer, and it doesn't mean that the city's going to raise the rate to that recommendation. We, so it's, it's a two-fold evaluation. They evaluate our system independently of itself and the cost that they see that it takes to run that system, and then they look at the rate that we charge for that. And they're going to say, well, you guys should be here for everything that you do. But then we look at it on the fin, finance side through the budget, and we're like, okay, we're fine where we're at. Um, our guys may be more efficient at it than what the engineer has seen in other cities. So, so it's evaluated two-fold. So don't think that if you see something in those studies and the rate, you know, is way high, um, most likely we won't be there. We have a very efficient crew, um, they do a very good job, and, and it's evaluated again through finance and utility. So, so we look at this in, through two different perspectives.
Thank you.
Anything else for us?
No.
Council comments. Let's start with our newest council member.
I am just honored to be here, um, with all of you. So, thank you for everyone that voted, and I hope to make everybody in Ward 2 very proud, um, as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Conley?
Well, I'd like to welcome our newest member, and I think she's going to be disappointed if she thinks it's going to bleed everybody in the ward. I'm going to miss Mike, he was here for a number of years, and, and mostly, you know, I didn't agree with him on everything, we had several disagreements over the years, but I, I, you know, he did his best as he saw it, and he is going to be missed, and that has nothing to do with you, okay?
Mr. Leder.
Uh, to start off with, I'd like to thank everybody in Ward 2 that voted for me. Uh, it's an honor to be able to represent you for another two years, and I thank the council for electing me here pro temp.
Mr. Rice?
I want to thank Mr. Doyle and his staff, they do a great job, they do a lot of hard work that people don't realize, they don't see, uh, they're on top of things, I was really impressed by them, Mr. Doyle.
I want to welcome the new council member. And I. Mr. Curtis?
I'm wearing the only purple shirt I own. Uh, it's the month of the army child, AKA an army brat. I'm an army brat, and I've been all around the world, and I call Waynesville home, and I've seen lots of pretty country, but this is my home, and it has been since my junior year of high school. I am proud of the city of Waynesville, and it's an honor to have a new council person on board, and it's an honor to be with all you guys even when we disagree.
Anything else? And you turned out very well.
Well, we're exiled.
What brand?
Army, army brat.
Mr. Wilson?
I want to thank all of the, the citizens, constituents in Ward 3 for reelection, um, and, uh, continue to do my best to serve everybody within that area.